To the flag of the United States.
America.
The Republic.
The Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Invisible, liberty and justice.
Before we start to make our brief disclaimer pursuant to Governor Chris Kuss executive order 2020-07 COVID-19 Executive Order Number Five, which suspends the requirement of the Illinois Open Meetings Act requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body for the duration of the group memorial disaster proclamation, the members of the village board will not be physically present for the designated meeting, but will instead participate in the meeting through audio office using a virtual meeting platform. Public comment may be submitted in advance to the meeting for village clerk D. Jones at university-park-il.com or by text at 708-473-6201. All comments must be received by 5:00 p.m. the day before the meeting. Are there any general public comments, Madam Clerk?
No, there were not, sir. We see none for this meeting. And if I could request something before we move forward is consideration for just a moment of silence before we move into this meeting because without the service and the work of this man there too, we probably would not be in the form that we are now. And that's John Lewis and C.T. Vivian.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Well, today, board, thank you guys for convening on this spare moment to drop over there. But you know what's very important? Today, we have Senator Joyce. We're going to get an upfront update from Aqua and where we're going to go from this day on. So Senator Joyce, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I sat down with the mayor, what was it, three, four days ago? And I sat down with Aqua about a week ago now. And initially, I wanted to just try to open some dialogue because their lawyers and Attorney General are having conversations, but I wanted to get it down to common ground, just bare bones. Let's see what we can do to get the residents of University Park clean drinking water and just see what was to be said. Well, then it turned into a little bit more of a meeting than I anticipated. We, Aqua had their attorneys there. And also, one of their attorneys is a former EPA Director Renee Reciprocano. And I brought Jennifer Batino-Tarrant with me.
Reba. Hello.
Yeah. And so basically, they laid out where they felt things were and how they, that we could get beyond where we are currently. And they feel as though they've hit a wall and need some help working with the public to advance this further. So I wanted to meet with the mayor and then I wanted to meet with all the trustees because it's your community. And I'll share with you what they shared with me. But ultimately, I serve the public and you are the public. So I want to hear, after I give you a brief breakdown of what they said, I want to hear what you have to say in regards to that. It's very important that we, one way or the other, come out with a unified message. And the mayor and I were in agreement with that. If we can get my office and Jennifer Batino-Tarrant and the EPA and the mayor's office and all the trustees, all having a common theme for the residents, I think we can move whatever direction we want to with more force and with, the residents will be more confident in the decision-making because it's a unified message. I compared it a little bit to what's going on in the United States with COVID-19. We have a mixed message. Our governor's saying one thing, our president's saying another, and we're not solving the problem. And I think it's the same deal with what's going on in University Park. If we have a unified message, people aren't confused. And I think they're more apt to be part of the solution. And I wasn't pleased with a lot of what happened in the meeting, but they came in with a lot of facts and a lot of data. And what worries me, and this is what I can say to your mayor, is that I feel as though they are going to move into a phase where they are going to start pulling back the bottled water. I really do. And I think that they feel as though they've got enough data that if litigation were to occur, they can show a path to resolving this that I don't think all of you as trustees and the mayor are going to appreciate. And I don't either. So the caveat that I'll say at the very beginning, wherever your body of government and what all of you decide, I'm with you 100%. If it's going down a path of trying to do a PR statement or a public service announcement where we have people flush, I'll be with you. And if it's not a path you want to go down and we don't feel that Aqua is doing all this in good faith, I'll go down that path with you too. So I'm here, I'm in your corner, but I wanted to share all the data that we had. Is that a fair representation of what we talked about, Mayor? You're on mute.
That's right, that's right, that's right on the head, it is. And what I'm afraid of is they want us to send a message about using the water and it's sitting at 72% for the longest. And I refuse to send that message because they refuse to give us any leniency, any grace period of 60 to 90 days of no sewage bills so residents can run the water, maybe this problem could be fixed. But they, it's basically just, no, 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 that's not what they're ready to compromise. And it seems like it's an apparent attempt to force us to use the water. And now I had an opportunity to speak with Congresswoman Kelly yesterday, so she's with us 110% now.
Right.
So she said, put her in, put her in. But also, those tactics and it's all about the economy. It's all about the economy. It's not about the well-being, it's not about the humanitarian effort, not about the long-term effects of lead. What we might not have now, we might have different effects 10 years down the line. And it seems like Aqua's just there. Today, on the Attorney General's call, they specifically told me today in their court order that they must continue for the ability to pick up water. But at the end of the month, if I'm not mistaken, the ICC might allow them to start cutting off utilities. Is that correct?
Well, that's correct, but I've had, I had a one-on-one with seven witnesses in the room with Craig Blanchett, and I looked him and I pointed at him, I said, you're not shutting anybody off. He said, no, we're not. I said, okay. I said, I will make that very, very clear. I said, could you do that, go down that road, all bets are off. Because I think, Mayor, and as you stated, there have been no concessions about the sewage bill. But I think having a meeting like this where we have all the trustees and just like if we were to help try to do a public service announcement to get advanced by flushing the water, I think that we can have a unified front talking to Aqua with all of us signing a letter stating, you know, we can go down this road, but here's what we think that you should do. And I don't think that would be a bad plan. And I'd have to bounce it off of your attorneys and off the Attorney Generals. I don't want to step on anybody's toes with any litigation that's going on. I'm just trying to get clean drinking water for University Park. So I'm going to need your assistance in seeing how we want to go down this with all of you. And, but, Mayor, did you share with your trustees the email that I gave you with Aqua's presentation?
No, I was thinking he was going to do it tonight.
Okay. Well, I've got, and Mayor's got a copy of it, and either give me a list or if you're...
I'll give it out to them.
Okay. But we've got, we've got different things that Aqua was, you know, showing us when we went to meet with them. And there's a few very compelling arguments with the way they put flushers in a few houses that had high lead counts. And after 30 days of these flushers operating, the lead levels were, they had dropped all within the EPA standards. That's interesting and it's...
That's not true.
What's that?
That's true.
That's not true.
It's not true?
No. All right, listen to this one.
See, that's good to know. That's why I want to talk with all of you.
They put in what's called a gnome system underneath my kitchen sink and it flushes constantly. So they told me I do not have to flush my water because the system will do it. My levels, or still, at least I just got the last sample result yesterday, and it's a lot lower than it was in the beginning, but it's still very close to 100. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's high, yeah.
She had the highest in the town.
Yeah, it's been as high as 300. And my next-door neighbor, they did the same thing for him. Plus, they replaced some other stuff in his unit. But to say that the gnome system has reduced the lead level is not...
Not accurate.
Yeah, and it's still, I don't drink the water.
Right.
You know, but...
How do we, as a community, take all the different examples of, here's what Aqua's saying, but here's what's happening? And we've got proof of that. I think that, that, I mean, that's, I'm in there with a meeting and I don't have any of that data. So I don't really have an argument back at Aqua. So that was, that was part of, you know, so I'm listening to what they have to say and I don't have any data to contradict anything. And that's what I would need from like you, Ms. D. I mean, it's, it's...
And I... Right.
And can I say something, Senator, Mayor, please?
Yes, great. Sorry, Miller.
This is Joe Miller, one of the attorneys for the district. Senator Joyce, you know, I think one of the things that I've, because every meeting, you know, usually on the public comment, and I'm kind of surprised there's actually not one comment, you have a comment from the citizens and like, what's going on with Aqua? And I know that the mayor has worked with another one of our attorneys. I mean, they put in countless hours on this issue. I mean, I think part of the problem is that the, I don't feel like the board has been informed all the way. And, you know, I almost sense the frustration from the board in regards to, is it open level, equal communications rather than almost dictates? The mayor's worked, I mean, like, really, really hard trying to work this out. And I shouldn't, and then I should also mention the village manager, I believe, has worked really, really hard as well. I know the mayor has talked to one of our other attorneys a lot on this issue. And that would help out a lot to come out, if, you know, Aqua wants a unified front, they need to actually, they need to come to the mayor with all of the facts that you just heard that, you know, Madam Clerk D indicated that something, you know, was a little false. You know, I, you know, I don't live in University Park, but, you know, I've, you know, I've come to know and respect all of the members of the board. And, you know, they're going through, there's a lot of sacrifices they're making in regards to this, not just in regard, you know, obviously, the COVID thing is one other thing, but in regards to how they're using water, you know, and, you know, what is this doing for their overall standard of life and things of that nature? I can't even imagine what would, you know...
No, I can't either.
What happens if you wanted to try to, quite honestly, sell your house? You know, what's going to happen if you try to sell a house and the first thing they look is they see that your University Park, the water system, they had issues with the water system? And all of the trustees have expressed this frustration. And I think that's part of the issue. They, you know, and I mentioned the mayor because I know he's been working with one of our attorneys, Michael and Avon, you know, talked to some attorneys who are litigation experts who worked with, who did some stuff with Flint. And nobody wants to go down that road. But, you know, I think all of the board members, you know, want to make sure that they're getting all of the facts because they have members of the public that they have to respond to as well. And I can see a couple of you guys nodding your head and everything in regards to that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe. And that's absolutely right. Because there actually is no communication with Aqua. Go ahead, trustee Bowden.
Yeah, may I be quick and ask, Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Red flag has gone up in my house again. Melissa from Aqua called me personally and said, what's going on in your house? Anything different? No, but my numbers are steady rising. So she came out personally Monday, last Thursday, and cleaned all the aerials or whatever those things are called. When she opened it up and, you know, with her phone, you could see the big particles of lead that she said they're concerned about. So my numbers, and I, and believe me, I'm here all day, every day, and I'm flushing and I got water going everywhere. And so it's not that I'm not flushing these pipes out.
Right.
Steady buildup going on here in my house.
Trustee Franklin, you guys have something? You have something?
Yeah, I was just, I could just, I just want to speak to the fact that absolutely we have, well, I have residents that call my phone every day that's concerned about this Aqua issue. And it's unfortunate that a lot of times I don't have the answer because Aqua is not communicating as they would be if we were in this together to try to find a real solution. It almost seems as though they're in a phase to where they're now placing the blame on us to say that we're not doing what we're supposed to do, which is foolishness. So the residents are, the residents are very upset and it's coming to a point where I think we trusted that the solution that they presented would, in a matter of time, begin to produce results. And that matter of time is up. And you hear scenarios like Madam Clerk, whose numbers were in the thousands...
Yeah.
But now they're in the hundreds and they consider that a success, but that's not a success. So the feeling, the vibe that I get in the community is that Aqua could care less about us and they're treating us in a manner that we're animals.
And, 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 I, go ahead, go ahead.
And it's getting to, it's getting to the point where the frustration is serious. Many of us that are raising children and grandchildren in the community, this situation is dire. And when you couple that, when you couple that with COVID-19, it presents very, it presents some very challenging situations that it's just not a good look. So that's my input. I appreciate you being on the call because we are at a state of emergency in several different matters in the village. And this is something that's serious. And I agree, if we can all come on a united front with a common goal, I pray that we can find some solutions. I know our residents won't answer this. And not only do the residents want to answer, the reality is everybody on this board is a resident. So we want to answer too.
Darn right. And you're the one that has to listen to it.
Absolutely. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Give me one second, trustee Curtis. I mean, yes, sir, give me one second. But you know what, Senator? As I was saying the other day, I'm really starting to feel that if this was a different composition of a community, if it wasn't predominantly African-American community, I feel like there would be different results. And I'm starting to get to the point where I'm ready to go to the media and put the pressure on these people because black lives do matter and water is essential. And we don't know what is going to happen to our young people in the future. So there are demands that I'm quite sure that not just myself, the board, and the residents have for Aqua water. And it's time that our voices are heard in a loud, clear, concise message. And it's just that time. We've been patient. I compliment my residents on their resiliency, on their ability to adapt and adjust, but give us something for our bucks. They treated us like crap from the start as Aqua never admits to how this whole scenario started. It started because Aqua did not follow the protocol because they did not take a piece of pipe off and take it into the laboratory and test the effects in the laboratory on what the results of the new chemical would be. And they had only had that kind of kindness or consideration, we wouldn't be here. Instead, they took computer-generated testing and it went into the system and it blows us up and it blew everything for us. Not just as long as our community improvement and property values are going up, but economic growth is at an all-time high. So we don't need anything to stunt our growth, to stunt the growth of our economics, our children, our families, our elderly people. Curtis has a mother-in-law, 90-some years old, that needs to get water. We've got people that get dropped off gallons of water at 95 and 96 years old. So the compassionate, the human, humanitarian side is absolutely missing.
I believe, I believe I met one of them at Regal Farm.
Yeah, yeah, you did. Trustee Jenkins, then trustee Curtis, go ahead. So, Bill?
Um, you know, thank you for coming out, Senator. Also, I'm having major, major, major concerns with Aqua Water Company. I've had residents come over and knock on my door, call in reference to their services being disconnected and receiving information and telephone calls in reference to Aqua threatening to disconnect their service. And my thing is, is that I had the opportunity for going somewhere for the mayor and meeting the Piattone mayor at the time. And he was explaining to me the way they are protecting Piattone by doing the examples of cutting the pipes out of houses and making sure that all of these things should be taken care of. And my concern is Aqua. I had an opportunity with our mayor to sit in on a meeting with Aqua. And I did not like Mr. Craig Blanchett's stance. I didn't like his posture and his stance when the mayor was asking him questions in reference to this community. And I was, and I thought it was downright offensive the way he sat there and acted as if it was our problem. And so the thing with Aqua is, is now, black lives do matter. Now it's time to take the gloves off. We've been more impatient, it's been more, over a year. We've been more than understanding. We, we're turning on water. They're charging us for the water that we're helping them with a problem that they created. And then they don't want to give us any form of concession in reference to this, our lives and our health and the health of our children, grandchildren, school-aged children, the schools. So Aqua is, to me, for them to not even have any form of compassion toward this community, it needs to be addressed and it needs to be addressed publicly. We're past the point of being understand. I'm not understanding anything that they're saying. I really don't want to hear anything that they're saying because they're showing me who they are and now I believe them. They do not care about this community and I'm having a major problem with the way that they are treating us and the difference between us and the difference between Piattone. I have a problem with that. So now I'm really watching that. And I feel that everything needs to be addressed. And I have a little, a bit of anger in me because we have sickly residents, we have residents that are dealing with cancer, we have women that are pregnant, we have babies, we don't know how they're going to be affected with their cognitive skills later down the road. And Aqua is like, oh, oh, well, this is a billion-dollar-a-year industry. You have not offered this village a thing, not one thing. And then you turn around and decide that you want to pour the water that you're giving us, which is essential for life, away from us and going to tell us, well, this is what we're going to do? And we're supposed to just sit down and say, well, it's okay? Well, it's not okay. And if we have to do a march and go down to Kankakee and get in cars and let them know that we're not playing with them, it's time to take the gloves off and let them know that we're not playing with them. We're tired. Now, I'm tired of being sick and tired. That's where I'm at with this.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Well said, well said.
And I've been mentioning, over the last week or so, we've had, last two weeks, a foul odor that blanked us the whole community. We've got boil orders just about every single day. Today, they had some on Oyster. Yesterday, it was on Pendo. The other day, it was on Clover. Boil orders, boil orders that day.
Two weeks ago on Amherst.
Oh, Amherst. So that's what's going on. Trustee Curtis, I'm sorry.
Okay, then, thank you, Senator Joyce, for joining us today. And thank you for that call that you made, that you, on a weekly call every week. Thank you for that. And like the mayor and I said, Mayor is correct. I do have an 85-year-old mother-in-law staying with me. And I have two households. I have one with the water that I can consume and I have one with my mother-in-law who lives on Pennup Lane. She's a part of the no drinking and no eating, no whatever, right? So I get calls from residents in that area and my mother-in-law's with us and they don't want to deliver the water to me over here because she's not staying there anymore, but they feel that they doing me a favor by delivering the water here. And the mayor and I talked about it. They went from bottled water to gallon jugs. One thing they want to take away that from us is like we did something to them and they are angry. Why should they be angry? We're the ones that should be angry at this point in time. I am very angry at this, this whole, this whole thing because we did not, we did not cause this problem. They caused the problem. But yet and still, they're trying to turn it around like it's our fault. But this has been going on for over a year and we should be able to consume this water and it's not really working. I don't live in that household where we have to run the water, but they're charging me for the sewage and they're charging me for water usage at my house anyway. So I'm like you and everybody else, we are tired of this. It's been over a year. Is it going, really, by running the water, is it really going to help anything? I don't think it's going to help anything. Ask Madam D, ask Sonia. It's not helping anything, it's been over a year. So what should we do? It's not our fault. It's not our fault at all. So they trying to make it think, they trying to make us think like it's our fault, but it's not. It's their fault for causing this problem. And they, and it's, and they trying to make it like we are the culprits in this whole water fiasco. Because that's what it is, it's a water fiasco. How can you sell your property? How can you catalyze the schools when it's, when you have a water price, a water crisis? And we have a water crisis. We don't want it to escalate like Flint, Michigan. We don't want to do that. I have family members who live in Flint. We don't want it, we don't want to do that. We want to be able to take care of this, we want to be able to bathe, we want to be able to consume, we want to be able to drink water like everybody else. That is our God-given right. We are just asking for the same thing that they go home and take for granted, a glass of water. That's all we want. That's all we want. But they making me pay twice. They making me pay for my regular service and they making my mother-in-law pay for the sewage. And she doesn't even live there. And they think it's a special privilege for them to deliver water at my house. Really? Honestly? And this is Pendo Lane and we cover this a lot. Now, they can act all haughty as like they want to. Joyce, Senator Joyce, I don't understand the numbers that you're talking about. They saying it's getting better, but D and trustee Bowden said, no, it's not getting better. Those people are not getting better. And they are flushing right now. They're flushing. They're not getting any better. So where we going to go from now? I think the mayor's right. I think we should protest. I think we should take it to the media because we're not getting anything resolved by this matter here. Because trustee Brooks and the mayor and Senator Joyce have been on the phone with them for months.
Oh, yeah.
What has transpired? Nothing. We should take it to another level.
I hear, I hear the frustration.
I'm very frustrated.
Yeah, and I think you're all, you're all absolutely right. I mean, you're the ones that have to deal with the frustration every day. You're the one that has to deal with the phone calls from your constituents. You're the ones that have to live it. And, and it's been a year, you know, as trustee Franklin said. I mean, after a year and trustee McMullin, I mean, I understand your frustration and I wanted to get a ground look at this thing and called that meeting just so I could see where their heads were at. And as I said at the beginning, I am in this with you. If you want to go down the media and protest, I'm with you 100%. I'll be walking with you. So I want to, I wanted to get a feel from the whole body on...
You have.
Aqua has. And I would like, I would like the mayor to share the information that I gave you from that meeting. And then I would like to try to get us a platform where, you know, like, Madam Jones, I want your information. I want as many as your constituents' information that we can compile and come at Aqua with facts that they're saying... and uh uh come at Aqua with facts that they're saying aren't facts. So, you know, and we just need to have a unified front, no matter which way we go. And as you said, we give. Yeah, well, I mean, we 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 get Robin Kelly and myself and another senator and the Will County exec and we come at this from a unified front, whatever way we want to do it. I I think that's the way to go. So I am following your lead. I I I do want to compile some information and uh um get it back to Aqua and let them know what's coming and and see if that shakes anything loose. And if it doesn't, then full on, I'm with you.
They gave it in the bottles. What are we gonna do? It always sends back retaliation. I'm sorry, trustee, go ahead, trustee Sonia.
I I talked with the mayor, um I let, I guess, last week or a week before and I told him I was very frustrated with the situation. And I explained to him, I said, if he has, if Craig Blanchett has four or five hundred people standing on his lawn with a glass, an empty glass, asking him for some water, I bet you he'll change what he's thinking. And he'll do something quickly and do it quickly because it's gonna go nationwide. And that's what needs to, that needs to happen. It needs to go nationwide so he'll understand that we're not playing and we're not taking this another day.
And we're going nationwide, not just.
Not another day.
Madam. Yes, trustee Williams is by phone and we're having some technical difficulties. She had comments. Trustee Williams? Okay.
May I be recognized?
Can you hear? Okay, go ahead. She said, could she be recognized?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, trustee.
Okay, I'm sorry, something is wrong with my computer, I can't see you all, I can only hear you. So I do want to get my comment, everything that all the trustees have said. I don't want to repeat it, I feel the same exact way. I am here on White Oak Lane and we are having the same problem, White Oak and Penno. We can't do nothing, run our water fifteen minutes a day, every day, more than, more than what, twice? The one in the kitchen and the one in the bathroom. We can wash our dishes and all of that, but I don't even trust that. We can't use it to, I don't brush my teeth with it. I do dissolve the water and it's sickening. I got a bill, my bill is for sewage. I never got a bill for nothing like this. My bill has always been since I've been over here, well, until they went up, Aqua went up on the bill. It was like forty, forty-two dollars a month. Now I get a bill for just sewage for forty-seven dollars a month. And there's not supposed to be any water on it? Something is wrong. So what's gonna happen? When they say we can use the water, is my bill gonna double? It does not make sense to me.
I'm paying, excuse me, mayor, excuse me.
Oh, that's right.
I'm paying two forty a month. That's what we're paying at our house, so two hundred and forty dollars a month.
We need reparations. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Oh, well, I, if I could, I truly agree that we should not allow Aqua to think that it's off of our minds. Because when this first happened, we had Channel Two, Five, Seven, Nine, Fox, everybody out here doing interviews for homes. We were all over national TV. And when you're quiet, people think that you have forgotten. And unfortunately, that used to be a saying that people used to say about black people. Oh, they'll forget it. We can't allow ourselves or Aqua to forget that we are the ones, we are the victims of their mistakes. Whether it was.
Absolutely, D.
Or unintended, it happened on their watch. And now they're being selective about it. They concentrate on making it better for them. So I think we need truly a united front.
Absolutely.
And one message, we are one people. We need one precise message. And like John Lewis, when they went to march across the Edmund Pettit's Bridge, they got knocked down, but they kept up. So we can't back up.
At all, D, at all.
Thank you, I concur.
Okay.
So Senator Joyce, you have it.
And I'll get you all of my information I've got, I've got.
Yeah, please, I think I'm getting a very loud and clear message. So uh um I think that we should have another meeting sooner rather than later. Um and 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 I think we need to be talking to um perhaps the Attorney General um or or your own village attorney and make sure that we're not interfering with, but I guess it doesn't matter if you're interfering with a lawsuit or not. But uh uh your voices do need to be heard. And I think that COVID nineteen actually gave Aqua a reprieve. And I think that we're, and and I think that the message needs to be heard and I I hear what your your entire village board is saying loud and clear. I think we need to come up with a game plan on how, when and where. And uh mayor, I think you and I can coordinate another Zoom with the uh the entire board. And uh I'm gonna put some thoughts together with my staff. I'll reach out to Jennifer Patino-Terran, I'll reach out to uh yeah, whoever will listen and from my end. And uh I am also going to convey, unless this body tells me not to, I'm gonna convey to Aqua what's coming at them. I think that's actually a very smart move, uh but if you don't want me to, I won't.
No, I'm trying to hesitate about that because every order that we take, it seems like there's some retaliation in some way or another upon somebody. Every time that we speak up and ask for some compliance from AG's office, before you know it, they're starting to call and you know, not just to know if COVID affecting us with our health, but it's also affecting us mentally. And then they have an additional pressure with them constantly calling about water bills and and we're gonna do this, send out all the bells and the whistles, saying one thing and doing another. It just doesn't work. But I do agree that from this day forward, we need to plan, organize with an expedited agenda and move forward because our voice needs to be heard and we need to make sure that we have our list of demands that we want from them.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right. We need to have not just protest, but protest with a purpose.
That's that, that's the whole thing. Because we deserve something better.
And I, and I think that, I think, I think you made a great point to say that COVID nineteen has um put it, put us in a position where people have been quieted down and been stuck in their homes. But on on our behalf, if you look at it from a different perspective, being stuck in our homes um with 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 no good water has put people in positions where they have to do different things with the water where at first they they didn't have to. And then you also factor in the looting and different things. We had a point with grocery stores wasn't 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 as available as as they should have been. And, you know, people had issues where they they may have had to drink some of that water. You know what I mean? It's essential to life. So I think, uh, I think, I think the last thing I'm gonna say, I think we need to be strategic about how we're gonna present the information in the documentary.
Oh, I agree.
Uh, like D Jones has said, and uh that's something, we need to have a further conversation on how we're gonna present that information. Is it gonna be through video, are we gonna document it? But I think those are very valuable um testimonies that we need to put out there because I'm sure there's thousands of testimonies of people who who are going through these struggles with with the with the misconception that things are getting better. But in their households, truly knowing that things are not getting better. So I think that should be the the next step. Um, if we can have more conversation about what that should look like, so that can be presented to Aqua. And then following that, we need to plan on going down to Kankakee and making some noise, because this is ridiculous.
And 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 just, and just just on top of this, I had Repipe America, as I was telling you, Senator, I had Repipe America come out and and give me an estimate. Now, every home is gonna be different and I was probably assumed that the home similar to ours, but every home should get them repiped between ten and twelve thousand dollars.
But I heard that. If I might add, when I say Aqua is selective about who they do for, I know for that Aqua has repiped at least one house in my area. If their, if Aqua's cost put on new, new uh faucets, brand new lines and did some repiping.
Right.
You know, so it it's not that they don't know, but I can't say what the results or but I can't get those results since this hasn't been done. But uh they've got to do for every, all of us are entitled to the same type of service. And I think that that's one of our messages we need to make sure that Aqua hears about.
No, not with that.
Well, I think we've got a clear plan of what we, what our intentions are. I feel the the board is, uh, I said at the beginning, we need a united front. I think you have a united front. It's just a matter of getting, uh, you know, as trustee Franklin said, we need to get our message right. And I, and the mayors and I have talked about that also, is that, you know, protesting with a purpose and a plan and and demands, not just to make noise, but to get action. So I think we need to come up with a uh a clear uh strategy and then proceed.
Okay. So what do you want to reconvene on, Senator?
That uh is up to your board. You've got a lot more people to to organize than just me. I'll I'll make something work. So you guys come up with a date, I think. Yeah, um you, you can talk amongst yourselves, I'll talk amongst my staff and and some communications people that uh might be able to help us with this. Um, I'll reach out to a few other elected officials and get some input there so that we can uh make our cause even stronger. Uh, I think that will help a great deal. I appreciate and uh uh pray for everybody on this call because you're the ones that deal with it on the front lines every day. I I can feel your frustration. And all all you want is something very, very simple, clean, affordable drinking water. It's a pretty, pretty message.
Thank you so much for your time, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
Hey, thank you all very much. Um, I'll be in touch with you, mayor, and uh as you, as you get together and put together um your kind of messages, we'll we'll merge all those together, we'll meet again and get something moving. Appreciate all of it.
Talk to you later, Doc.
All right.
All right. Okay, though. And and so so Madam Clerk, before we just go over this, let this last thing, are you there, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I guess we'll have to find out some kind of way, if we have to meet one-on-one and organize to we can make sure we have our plan right. So when we come back to our next meeting, we'll have our plan of action in order.
Okay.
Yeah, and what I'm gonna do, mayor, if I if I may, um I'll put together, I'm actually gonna be out of town tomorrow, but I'll put together an email that I'll send to you and Madam Clerk, you know, and some talking points. Me, because I feel like part of, um, first of all, I'm proud of all of you guys. I think you guys represented your village extremely well. Um, and your frustration needed to be, um, made sure that you get to the state senator. But, you know, let's get together some of the facts there because they're, I think, they, you know, he indicated that he was presented with some facts, but clearly what's going on in your own homes indicates that's not, those facts aren't necessarily correct. So we, I'll put together an email and then you guys can kind of, you know, fill in the dots or fill in the blanks on the email and then we can go from there. And uh because this is just, you know, it's been over a year. I remember one of the first things I, um, you know, my first meeting I came to you guys was um in June of twenty nineteen. So we are now in July of twenty twenty and and, you know, thirteen months later and it still hasn't been resolved. So we need to, you know, I think you guys need to make, maybe make that step, next step.
Yeah, it's timing, we need to have solid um solid demands that we want, absolutely.
Yeah. And, yep, and also thank you for the Fannie Lou Hamer quote. Um, that is mad, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. Fannie Lou Hamer is actually uh my mother's aunt, so.
Oh, okay.
So here close to home, I got you.
You did.
All right. Are we gonna go to item uh E one B? First, second, and third reading requiring face coverings, COVID nineteen. Are there any questions?
We need a motion first.
Need a mo, need a motion? For item E one B, first, second, and third reading and orders requiring face covering, face coverings. Were you making a motion, trustee Shirley?
I did, yes, that was on mute.
Move my trustee.
Second.
Second, my trustee, uh, uh, Scotty Bear Jenkins. Questions? No, no questions? Well, and you guys know what this ordinance is really all about? It's 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 about making sure that stores have posting outside their door requiring their patients to wear face masks when entering in areas in the public spaces and everywhere. So that it's an effort to continue to protect our public as Illinois' uh constant kind of rise and here and there. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams? Trustee Williams?
Back to her.
Okay, she's here.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks, he's absent. Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Vote aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Vote aye for safety.
Trustee Bolden.
Vote aye.
Trustee McMullin. Trustee McMullin.
He gone.
No.
He's back, he might be muted.
Trustee McMullin.
His camera is muted, but um.
He's.
There you go, he voted aye.
He voted aye.
Mayor Ru Dees.
Vote aye.
Mister Mayor, who, that's ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight.
Thank, thank you, guys. Uh, item E one C, a resolution of condoning celebrating the life and services of Mr. Eugene Lawson Jr. Is there a motion?
Almost.
Move by trustee Bale Jenkins?
Second.
Second by trustee Franklin. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams?
Vote aye, vote aye.
Trustee Brooks, he's absent. Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Vote aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Vote aye.
Trustee Bolden.
Aye.
Trustee McMullin. Trustee McMullin. Okay. Mayor Ru Dees.
Vote aye.
Uh, Mister Mayor, that's resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen.
Item E one D, resolution of condoning celebrating the life and service of our sister, Mrs. Rochella White. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Move by trustee uh Jenkins, second by trustee Bolden. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams? Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Vote aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Vote aye.
Trustee Bolden.
Aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Vote aye.
Mayor Ru Dees.
Vote aye.
Mister Mayor, that's resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen.
Item E one E, motion authorizing village manager to expend funds not to exceed fifteen thousand for summer youth programs. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Move by trustee, uh, Jenkins?
Second.
Second by trustee Bolden. Roll call.
Trustee Williams? Trustee Williams? I'll come back to her. Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both aye to put money in the kids' pocket.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye for the youth.
Trustee Bolden.
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin. I'll come back to him.
He's out there somewhere.
Trustee Williams? She said, yeah, both aye. Okay. Okay, I'll try trustee McMullin. Okay, got you. Mayor Ru did.
Both aye.
Hey, motion carries.
And, and Madame Kirk on item E one F, I have, I have removed that from the agenda.
Okay.
So I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We got to make that, move by trustee, Bill Jenkins?
I mean, most.
Need a second.
You guys, thank you.
Second by trustee Bolden. Thank you, everybody, stay safe. It's all been a happy weekend.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose, same side.